Thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This is our regular quarterly meeting. Mr. Bronco, could you provide the legal opening statement, please, sir?
Of course. This is a regularly called meeting of the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to KRS 61-826 and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road in Frankfort, Kentucky. It's also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. If you are speaking and are not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within thirty minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to a later date.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rankin, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Pendergrass?
Here.
Dr. Carver?
Here.
Mr. Cheatham?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Here.
Dr. Hackbart?
Here.
Dr. Milkman?
Here.
Mr. Omara?
Here.
And Mr. Powell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am. No public comment.
All right, very good. That takes us to the minutes. We have two meetings to approve. One of those is fairly short, so unless I hear an objection from the trustees, we can approve those minutes together. And I will entertain a motion to approve minutes for June 14th and July the 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have taken care of the minutes. Next item on our agenda is the Finance Committee Report, and I'll hand the mic off to Mr. Omara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The County Employee Retirement System Finance Committee held a regularly scheduled quarterly meeting on the August 22nd, 2023. And we approved bringing to the CERS Board both hazardous duty requests and new agency participation. Mr. Schrott, would you want to walk us through those, please?
Yes, I can. The CERS Finance Committee reviewed twenty-seven total positions for hazardous duty. All the positions were either police, fire, or EMS positions, therefore do meet the statutory guidelines. So we are asking the CERS Board of Trustees to approve the twenty-seven positions being requested for hazardous duty.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or discussions on these positions? I'm always surprised when we have so many positions from a local government entity that is not in hazardous duty. So these all look pretty straightforward. Absent any questions or discussion, all those in favor of approving these positions, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Mr. Schrott, back to you to talk about the two agencies.
Okay, and we also have Reed Village Water District and the City of Hanson. Both are seeking participation in CERS. They have submitted all the information that we require and also have submitted test files for three months satisfactorily. So therefore, we request that the Board of Trustees approve these two agencies to participate in CERS.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Milkman, for that second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Back to you, Mr. Omara.
Yes, next we heard the quarterly financial and year-to-date financial results, as well as the regular budget proposal or presentation. So I turn that over to Mike, please.
Hi there. I think we're on page fifteen. Sure, it's on the right page. So we're going to touch base here on this combining statement and net position for the pension funds. Near the bottom of that, you'll see that the June end balance is eleven point eight billion. That's up nine point two seven percent from the prior year amount of ten point seven nine nine billion. That's driven by the nine point nine percent increase of total investments and specifically the public equities investment asset class, which is up twenty point eight six percent or a billion dollars from the prior year. If you scroll to the next page, you'll see this billion-dollar increase is reflected on the statement of changes near the bottom. And this compared to the eight hundred and five million dollar decrease in the prior year of one point eight billion dollar swing, most of which is attributable to the net appreciation of the fair market value of investments, which is positive eight hundred and fifty-six million. In 2023, it was negative eight hundred and sixty-one million. That's outlined in Note Four. If we move to the insurance statements, similarly, the net position for insurance is four point eight nine seven million. That's up nine point two percent from the prior year of four hundred and thirteen million. This increase is also primarily driven by the increase in the public equities investment asset class, which is up twenty point two, twenty point three eight percent. Follow that down to the bottom of the next page, where you'll see a four hundred and thirteen million dollars increase. This compared to the two hundred and sixty-four million dollar decrease in the prior year is a six hundred and seventy-seven million dollar positive difference. And again, most of which is attributable to the net appreciation of the fair market value investments, which was positive three hundred and fifty-seven million fiscal year 23 and was negative three hundred and twenty-six million in 2022. If we move on to the contribution reports, you'll see that the C non-hazardous plan and the C hazardous plan reported a positive net contribution of sixty-eight point four million and seventy-five point eight million respectively. Both plans had an increase in inflows from all areas, most notably employer pay credit and employer contributions, which combined were six hundred and eighty-six point six million versus six hundred and forty-nine million for the C non-hazardous. That's a positive thirty-seven point six million dollar increase in two hundred and eighty-eight point one million versus two hundred and thirty-eight point eight million for the C hazardous, which is a forty-nine point three million dollar increase. The increase for C non-hazardous is being driven by salaries. They're up one hundred and six million. And the increase for C hazardous is also due to higher salaries, six million of that, but more importantly, higher contribution rates, forty-two point eight one percent versus thirty-five point six percent in the prior year.
Could I interrupt you just a second? Could you give us the difference between, a definitional difference, between employer pay credit and employer contributions?
Yeah, so I specifically asked if this get broken out on the financial statements. So the employer pay credit is the four percent that gets paid by employers to Tier Three employees. It becomes their money upon vesting. And so it is an employer contribution, but it's an employee money. But they were combined in a manner I thought needed to be broken out
Good.
this year. And so that employer pay credit plus employer contributions is what you want to look at when you're looking at employer contributions.
I think that's an important distinction. Thank you very much.
There was a significant increase in unrealized gains for both the non-hazardous plan and the hazardous plan, one point six billion and five hundred and seventy million respectively, allowing for an overall positive change in that position for the current period of seven hundred and five, one seven million and two hundred and ninety-five million dollars. The bottom chart indicates that without the investment activity, the non-hazardous plan would not cover the outflows of benefits refunds and administrative expenses by one hundred and nine point six million. However, the hazardous plan would have positive cash flow of thirteen point one million. And the insurance contribution reports, you'll see the C non-hazardous has a positive net contribution of sixty-six point five and the C hazardous reported a negative contribution of ten point five million. And that was due to lower employer contributions. Both insurance plans have much higher net investment income as well as unrealized gains. The lower employer contributions year-over-year is due to a decrease in the rates from both plans. For fiscal year 23, the C non-hazardous rate was thirty point three nine percent versus four point one seven percent. And for the C hazardous, the rates were six point seven eight percent this year versus eight point seven three in the prior year. The bottom chart indicates that without investment activity, the net cash would only be a positive five hundred thousand dollars for the C non-hazardous, negative forty-two point six million dollars for the C hazardous plan. Questions on those before I jump to the admin budget? Okay. I went ahead and, I'm going to talk about these by subcategories. So in first, the first one is the staff subtotal. We were nine point two five percent or three point four million dollars under budget, and we spent three point six one percent more than the prior year. I wanted to note that the employer paid retirement was under by two point three million dollars. I think we might have overbudgeted that in the prior year as we used a different rate than what the OSBD memo told us to use. And I'm not exactly sure why we budgeted a little bit higher than that. However, our salaries and wages were under by five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's the top line. One individual line item in this category was overbudgeted by nine, ninety-eight thousand dollars, and that was the employer paid sick leave, which again is very difficult to estimate based on how many people retire and their sick leave balances relative to retirement. For the legal auditing, legal and auditing services subcategory, overall, we are five point three four percent or sixty-three thousand dollars under budget, and we spent nine point seven seven percent less than the prior year. Auditing was under budget by ninety thousand, and the two board legal representation was under budget by one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in total. However, we did overspend a hundred and eighty thousand dollars with various legal firms tied depending litigation, and we overspent ninety-seven thousand dollars on legal hearing officers. As discussed previously, expenses tied depending litigation are difficult to budget for, and the legal hearing officers line item was driven by increased rates and increased case loads. For the consulting services category, we were three point three one percent or four hundred and twenty thousand dollars under budget and spent thirteen point three five percent less than the prior year, mostly related to the MMRO contract. The contractual services subcategory is overall, we are five point nine four percent. Forty-one thousand dollars under budget, spent eight point three one percent less than we did in the prior year. And, or five, eight point three percent more than the prior year. I apologize. Our facilities service, go ahead.
Excuse me, it might be my computer, but I'm having difficulty hearing everything you're saying. If you could project just a little bit?
I apologize. I could do that. Sorry, Bill. I was at facility security charges. They are fifty-seven point seven seven percent or forty-six thousand dollars under budget. Actuarial services were four point seven three percent or twenty-three thousand dollars over budget. And the miscellaneous contract line item totaled ninety-seven K. That includes fifty thousand dollars for the C E M benchmarking study and twenty-two thousand dollars for partial payments to the provalent, to provalent for the strategic plan. The total personnel category was under nine point seven one percent or three point nine million dollars and was one point nine six percent higher prior year. The operational subcategory, if we start down at the bottom, was twenty point two one percent. If you want to page down a little more sharing? Thank you. It's the first gray line there. The overall operations subtotal was twenty-two point two one percent or one point two million dollars under budget, and we spent three point eight two percent less than the prior year. And only one line item was significantly overbudgeted, which was the copier rental. I think that's on the page above that. It was eighteen thousand dollars higher due to the Xerox contract being higher than the prior year. We had several line items that were under budget in that operational category. So the total admin spend for fiscal year 23, it was eighteen point three three percent per nine point two million dollars under budget. This includes not having to utilize any of the four point one million unallocated reserves. And not considering the reserve, we were eleven point oh nine percent or five point one million dollars under budget. Overall, we spent forty million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, which was one point two four percent or five hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars higher than the prior year amount of forty point four eight one million. This is the final hybrid percentage allocation based on the rates that had been approved prior to that and allocated among pension plans as presented. In addition to that, at the year end of June, we specifically isolated the separation costs and charged them to the C plans. We also identified specific costs that were specific to the C and ORCA plans and allocated them one hundred percent to those plans. And doing all of that, you still see we stay at forty point nine eight million dollars in total. The allocation to those five pension plans are a little bit different than the allocation above after we make adjustments or support specific costs. And that's the six thirty total that got allocated out to the plans. Any questions on that? Okay. Outstanding invoices, I think, are the next part of this presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget about this. Those are the JPMorgan credits and earnings fees for the last year. As you know, most of our JPMorgan accounts were on a earn credit type format to where our fees were offset by earnings. We've since transitioned as a main one, all of our JPMorgan accounts to hard earned interest. So there's no more of this offsetting fees against earnings. As you can see, that we were losing some potential earnings as we weren't offsetting the fees enough. So we lost a potential one hundred thousand dollars in earnings because of that setup. Now we get charged fees and we get interest paid to us. They no longer offset, so that's the account situation going forward. And we started tracking the hard interest earned starting in February. Now on to the outstanding invoices. There's three point two five million dollar total at the end of June. That's nine percent higher. That's nine percent less than the three thirty-one amount of three point five million. Top ten employers with open invoices are the Kentucky River Regional Jail, the City of Covington, Kettin County Airport, the City of Fort Thomas, and the Houston Fiscal Court. The next page shows that we had seven penalty invoices that were waived during the quarter. Eighteen penalty invoices were created for a total of nineteen thousand dollars, and twenty-three penalty invoices were paid for a total of two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the quarter. And that's all I have on the financials.
And, Mr. Lam, would you have an update on cyber insurance?
Yes, what I wanted to bring to the board today related to cyber insurance is KPPA staff has made a request for proposal to market to provide us a cyber insurance policy. We've received a few bids. We've evaluated those bids. We feel like we're in a position to accept a bid. And as we were reviewing some of the details of those bids, we noted that that the named insured would be the KPPA. And I felt that it was appropriate that we ask permission of the C board to also name the County Employees Retirement System as an additional named insured in that insurance policy, just to cover ourselves in case the C board got sued for some reason due to a breach and our insurer got wildly and decided not to cover us because you weren't named, so.
We did the same for KRS and SPRS this morning?
We will do that tomorrow. We have been asking permission to do that as well. The premium, I can't disclose what it would be, but again, it's a KPPA admin expense that would get allocated under the hybrid percentage, but naming the C boards and the K boards and the KPPA in that contract negotiation, I felt was appropriate. Doesn't mean that that's the way the contract's going to go out because we're not to that stage yet, but I wanted to ask permission to do that before, while we had the opportunity in this board meeting.
Anybody have an objection to having us as a named insured?
I'm of approval to that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, Mr. Omara. Any questions on the cyber insurance?
And Mike, can you just give us, you know, a few examples of what's going to be covered through that policy?
Yeah, it was actually a comprehensive policy, so it would cover, you know, defense costs. It would cover, cover if we had some leakage of PPI, all of the notification to the various legal entities we have to do, as well as the persons themselves. It would cover monitoring. It would recover, it would cover recovery of our data if we lost data. I think the policies even apply, allow for a provision of payment of ransom through various channels if needed. It's a very comprehensive policy that we've gotten a couple bids back on. They're very similar. We haven't chosen one specifically yet. We have one that we like. But yeah, I think it's a very robust policy at a very reasonable price to my solubility, so.
Are you aware of any? I was curious, are you aware of any other state agencies which are basically contracting for such insurance coverage?
Am I aware of, I don't know if the Commonwealth has their own policy through COT. I think that they do. When we were pursuing this one, I think we weren't allowed to piggyback off that one, so we had to go get our own. I don't, besides that general knowledge, I don't know anything else specific about other agencies and policies.
Mike's correct. Most state agencies are covered under the Commonwealth Office of Technology, and they do have a contract, a cyber insurance that covers all of those agencies that are under their umbrella. And we did kind of see if we could get at it, and we could not because obviously the insurer's going to care how our infrastructure's done, what kind of securities we have in place, and it's different than what COT does. And so they needed, we needed our own policy.
Mike, ballpark, what are we looking at price-wise and what's the limitation on the coverage?
It was a five million dollar coverage and with a, I think, a hundred thousand dollar retention or deductible. And for those of you involved with the budget task force, our work group, you know, IT didn't put this in their budget because they thought it would be close to half a million dollars. It is nowhere close to half a million dollars. I don't know if I can say anything more than that. It's much less than that, so.
Good news. Any other questions on the cyber insurance? All those in favor of purchasing this separate policy with CERS as a named insured, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion is approved. Back to you, Mr. Omara.
Well, let's stay with Mr. Lam. I believe the budget work group has met. And he has, for informational purposes, an update on the biennial budget recommendation.
So I provided a memo in So I provided a memo in here. Um, and basically, this is a draft of what I plan to present to the KPPA board on behalf of the budget work group. I felt that it was appropriate that we provide this information to both the C and the K board for information only. As you know, the biennial budget process is coming up. Uh, we have to submit our numbers on October one. In the prior years, it was November one. So that's been moved up a month. As you also are aware, uh, we have a budget work group that spent a lot of time debating and allocating um our budget by line item in part of the admin budget. And so we did that for fiscal year twenty four. This biennial budget is for fiscal year twenty five and twenty six. And um, we've already been given a baseline amount approval number. And so that came from the state budget office. It's fifty one point six seven million dollars. If I have Sheri, can you move down a couple slides? Maybe you want more. Maybe one more. Well, I guess I could start there. So our prior year admin budget was fifty point four million dollars. And I've circled that number there because I want to show how we get from that fifty point four million to our new baseline amount for fiscal year twenty five and twenty six. I also want to point out that reserve number is a big sticking point. Um, and for fiscal year twenty four is four point eight million dollars. And we have that in our own admin budget set aside as money not to spend unless approved by the board, the KPPA board. So the next slide shows that we now have a fifty one point six million dollar provided amount in our baseline budget. So that's what the state budget office says, hey, you can spend fifty one point six million dollars in fiscal year twenty five and twenty six. When I ask them how they got to that number, they give me this little chart that says, well, last year you were approved to spend fifty point four million. Even though you didn't, you were approved to. And um, this is how we get to fifty one. They took our current salaries, they applied the six percent salary increase, and they provided us some money for the increase in health insurance costs. And they said, those are the two numbers. You add them up, it's one point two million dollars. And you add that to the fifty million, you get fifty one point six. Part of this process is they also give us our baseline personnel costs. So they look at our employee cap, they look at our current positions, they look at our vacant positions. And they asked us to budget our vacant positions at the midpoint of those salary ranges. And they said, after you did all that, they apply retirement percentages and health insurance costs. And they said, out of this fifty one point six million dollars, thirty seven point seven million is your personnel cost. And I said, okay. I asked them a few questions about how I could spend that money, uh, how I budget for all the other line items. And they said, we are spending restricted funds because they're coming out of our pensions. They're not general fund monies. We have a lot of latitude and leeway in how we allocate this fifty one point six million dollars. They do want thirty seven million in the personnel line item, but the rest of it, we can allocate however we see fit. Um, and we will do that as part of the twenty five admin budget. Uh, we did that for the twenty four admin budget. Uh, that got approved last quarter. And then next spring, we'll start uh taking this fifty one million and allocating it by line item. So in the meantime, what I propose to do is take this fifty one point six million dollars um that's in this, if you go one more slide, Sheri, sorry. So there's our twenty four admin budget. There's our twenty five, twenty six baseline submission of fifty one point six million. I just took the thirty seven million, which is the top line item, personnel line item that they gave us. They gave us thirty seven baseline personnel. I compared that to the prior year amount of thirty four million. It's three point two million dollars different. I also budgeted every other line item exactly the same um with one minor exception. If I do that, my reserve amount goes from four point eight million dollars down to two point eight million dollars. The K budget process does not have a reserve line item, but I'm still allowed to spend fifty one point six million dollars. So the budget work group uh has agreed to put that two point eight million dollars up in the legal line item. So instead of budgeting one point two million for legal for K bud, we're gonna budget four million dollars. That leaves us zero in the reserve um for the K bud. But as we go through the admin budget process, we will allocate that appropriately uh based on how the work group wants to do that. So that's the the baseline. In addition to that, if you go down one more slide, we are going to do an additional budget request for headcount. Um, so I've worked with HR, I've worked with some of the directors, the executives, on what type of positions we want to add to our two hundred and seventy headcount. And we've got fourteen total uh outlined with salaries. Uh, we want to bring in nine of them in fiscal year twenty five and another five of them in fiscal year twenty six. And we've allocated them based on the salary. So in order for us to do this as part of the biennial budget process, we are going to submit this additional budget request. There has to be justification for the positions, why we need them, this, that, and the other. We plan on doing that. We budget their salaries, et cetera. And then on the next slide, I went ahead and allocated their salaries and I applied FICA. I applied the retirement percentage, health insurance percentage, and that gives me the total dollar amount that I'm gonna ask for in the additional budget request. So for fiscal year twenty five, those nine positions uh equate to about a million dollars. For fiscal year twenty six, we're adding an additional five positions. So you take the million from twenty five, the seven hundred and fifty five thousand from twenty six, and you get one point eight million. That's gonna be submitted on October one as well. Um, in addition to that, we are working with the budget office and personnel. We want to request an additional six positions, but we don't want to assign any dollar amount to them in the biennial budget. Um, so we want twenty additional headcount total, fourteen with dollars, six without. How we do that without the dollars is still a mystery. We're working on how to do that. Um, but we will work out those details and do that. It should not add any dollar amounts based on the way we want to do it in the budget request. And so at the end of the day, I just put a little chart together that shows you the baseline that they gave us, the additional budget request for each year, the total K bud amount we plan to submit, and the difference between that and the and the twenty four amount. Also noting that the reserve amount's up in the legal line item um instead of down in the reserve. As we get to fiscal year twenty five and twenty six and the budget work group works through the administrative budget process, we will likely have a reserve. The admin budget process is our way of managing these funds and how we spend them through our fiduciary responsibilities. Just because we have permission to spend fifty million dollars, we don't necessarily have to, and we haven't done so in the past several years. But it's there for us to spend if we have a need for doing it.
One question I have is that our actual um personnel total for twenty three was uh almost thirty three million. And the state has given us a budget of thirty seven million before we asked for those additional um positions. That includes another six percent raise in the health insurance item that you uh you mentioned. But there's still three million and change that uh we didn't spend last year. Do you have any feel for how that number might uh fall out for twenty five or twenty six? Do do we have that many vacant positions?
So ba- so basically, that difference between that thirty three million and thirty seven million is made up of a lot of the vacant positions, right?
Right.
So we were given permission to budget them in the baseline at midpoint.
Makes sense.
So that's the thirty three to the thirty seven. Now, whether we fill all twenty of those in the next year and a half um in twenty five, twenty six, again, depends on the market, depends on our hiring needs, depends on our turnover, right? We would like to fill all of them. I think HR's working hard to fill all of our vacant positions as quickly as possible. But sometimes in certain areas, as we get a new one, another one falls off. So we're trying to manage that, and we would love to spend all thirty seven million dollars on all of our positions that have already been approved.
So that would give us to the two seventy cap? Two seventy, is that the right number, David?
Correct.
Yeah, two seventy.
Two seventy is our current cap. That would be the thirty seven million at two seventy. But we're gonna ask for fourteen additional and maybe six more above that.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mike, just just so for my own edification here. Understand you're you indicated that you're moving the reserve fund to legal. Is that correct?
Yeah, just for the K bud submission, there isn't a reserve line item on the K bud board. Like, where do I?
And my my question then becomes, if we have a need to tap that for some reason other than legal, what type of, what? Can we do that or what hurdles do you have to go through in order to do that?
So for the K bud, we have a lot of leeway. They they're not gonna monitor us by line item. From what I've been told is they want us to budget the personnel amount at the baseline they gave us. And then we can spread the other amounts wherever we like, and we can spend it however we would like. The way we monitor that um is in the admin budget process. So in twenty five, when we finalize the admin budget, we will have an amount. We'll take it out of legal for the admin budget itself and put it down in the reserve amount. But that's separate than the K bud submission. So the admin budget is what the budget work group spends a lot of hours allocating appropriately based on what we really feel we should spend our money on.
Okay. So short answer is no restrictions?
No restriction of line item.
Other than what we do ourselves?
Correct.
Okay.
In the lingo of local government budgeting, we get budgeted by thumb total, not by department or line item.
Correct.
So one thing I'd like to to um put some color to is you all are talking about total dollars, and you're correct, Betty, in fund amount rather than anything lower than that. Except personnel, there's still a headcount control at the personnel cabinet. And that is why they're trying to predict what's gonna happen over two and a half years from now, and we have to submit it now. So the discussion by the administration is we want to ask for these additional positions, segregating between what's asked for the twenty five and then for the twenty six. And this is also before the strategic study results come back. But we don't have the luxury of waiting for that report before submitting this. This is, this is due in October uh to go through that biennial budget process. So that that's some clarification that helped me understand why we were doing it and how we were going about it. Thought I'd put that out there.
In my personal opinion, the changes that we have made uh by adding the budget working group uh by a a more energetic discussion about that administrative budget, a report that we put in all of our board meetings, uh by getting the boards involved in the budget discussion before it gets submitted downtown. I think we have a much stronger oversight role from all three boards uh over the administrative costs. Uh, Mr. O'Meara and his friends on the budget working group have done an outstanding job of uh pulling that together and making it a fairly robust oversight role.
Well, this is informational. It's going to be presented to the KPPA board uh for approval. Uh, but Mike is presenting to both boards to to, so that they know uh the direction that the recommendations are going. So if you have any other questions for Mike? Or any other comments by Mike? Then I think this um concludes the the finance committee report.
Well, while you've got the mic, you can roll on to the audit committees.
Well, all right. The uh KPPA Audit Committee held a regularly scheduled meeting on August twenty fourth. And uh, this is informational as well to remind the board, the the Audit Committee uh organization has changed from a joint KPP, uh CERS and KRS uh committee to a KPPA uh committee. Now, that that's an organizational change, even though the membership of the committee did not change. But um, the the committee had their first or second meeting under that uh organization and uh came across with some items um that I'll ask Director Kristen Coffey to go over with you all.
Good afternoon. As Mr. Omar was saying, um, the organizational structure has changed. Uh, and with that change, I worked with Mike Lam, and we went over items that are typically presented to the Audit Committee and then were presented at other committees or board meetings. And it was a duplication of effort on the part of a lot of staff. So we went through and we recommended to the Audit Committee some changes. So items that would go to the Audit Committee or maybe items that would go to a Finance Committee or a Board. And the Audit Committee did approve that, so you're looking, this page and the next page covers, these are just the standard things that were presented to the Audit Committee in the past, and these are our, the recommended changes that the Audit Committee approved. The biggest change is the quarterly financial statements. Uh, those are now gonna go to Finance Committee and then CERS Board and the KRS Board rather than having to first go through the Audit Committee. Again, this was just informational, just so uh the board is aware of the change that we were making.
And I would hope that we have uh two members on the KPPA Audit Committee. Uh, so if you want additional information about any of these types of topics, please uh contact uh Mr. O'Meara, myself, and we can keep you posted on the things that are happening at the Audit Committee. When this information gets to KPPA, we have four members on the KPPA Board. So uh, we do have some CERS representation uh along with discussion lines. Go ahead.
And we also, to along those lines, we also want the board to know that just because the structure has changed, that doesn't mean that things that aren't relevant won't still be presented. Absolutely, anything that is relevant to CERS can be brought before the board and discussed, and will, and we will do so. Any other questions about this item?
Okay, Kristen, you want to give us just uh an update of the projects? Now, these will uh be presented to KPPA Board from this point on. But we thought that it would be appropriate to show the status to both uh CERS and KRS Boards, since you all are used to seeing them uh before the transition to KPPA reporting.
So this is the list of all of the projects approved on the audit plan for the upcoming year and then other projects that we know will come up um just as the year goes on. So right now, we have twenty four planned audits or projects. Fourteen of those are underway. Um, one of them is actually in the final stages. It it's almost wrapped up. Um, it it should be done in the next, probably within the next week. But as as this Omar was saying, we know that you all are used to seeing the status of the projects, and we wanted to make sure you did still get to see that information. Any questions about any of the specific uh projects?
Hearing none. Um, I think that concludes the um audit uh report for CERS.
On, and next up, we have Mr. Powell, uh, who has been very busy on the retiree health plans. So he's uh got some information to bring forward to us. You have the mic, Jerry?
Thank you. This is kind of like, uh, you know, you get this time of year, it's kind of like the Santa's workshop. You get very busy because we got open enrollment coming. So uh, we ha- we've had two meetings. The first one was on September the fifth, and then the next one was actually yesterday on September twelfth. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Uh, we want to cover the easy parts first. There are actually several items that's gonna need uh the more ratification of the action that the uh retiree health did. Uh, the the first ones we will start with will be the non-Medicare eligible retirees. These are the ones that uh we provide the Kentucky Employee Health Plan, just the same as other uh agencies within state government. Uh, and so most And so most of this is worked out through the Department of Employee Insurance and Personnel. For the 2024, the Retiree Health Plan Committee recommends that the Board select the KEHP Living Well PPO Plan as the contribution plan. That is the one that sets what the rate will be. Madam Chair, do you want to do each of these individually or do each with the KEEP Plan as a group?
I think we can do them as a group. The committee, I will say, took a lot of effort into doing these one by one. So they have studied each one of these. I put a lot of faith in their recommendations. Unless I hear something from trustees about wanting to discuss, discuss them one by one. I think we, if you could give us the overview and then we can have one motion for each group.
Sounds good to me. And so that was the contribution plan, which would be set at, for 240 months of service, 100%. And then the, the, those same rates would be applied to the hazardous for the Living Well PPO, for the couple, parent plus and family plans. All, like I said, all these things mirror the, the KEEP Plan. So it's, these are stuff, items that were put forth, except for our contribution rate as brought to us from Department Employee Insurance. There's, again, there will be a tobacco users fee, $40 on a single, 80 for the couple. That's for those reporting the use of tobacco. One of the plans is the Living Well CDHP or the Consumer Driven Health Plan. It has a embedded health reimbursement account, which depending on which plan is, how much you will get, our elders will be reimbursed on. And we, as a committee, recommended that we keep allowing our members to have access to that embedded HRA. The next item on this would be response to the Living Well Promise Incentive. The, currently, and what we also proposed for 2024 is that they can, if they participate in Living Well Promise, they will get the $40 discount on their premiums. And this remains unchanged since, for our plan year 2024. And then there's also to allow the beneficiaries, retirees, dependents to roll into the default plan. If, would be the Living Well Basic CDHP. This is the plan without the HRA or the health reimbursement. And then allow for those who do not complete the health insurance Living Well Promise, then they will not be able to roll into the, are not eligible for that in the upcoming year. Also, the members who failed to submit a health insurance will be defaulted into that Living Well Basic Plan also. We also agreed that the, the cross referencing be allowed again. And that's up in accordance with the Cross Reference Plan. The and then also, also kind of new for this year was, as you remember, we had the lawsuit with the hazardous members about the, with the conflict with the Medicare Secondary Payer Plan. So a new subcategory that we've added this year is a, we set the, set the contribution, we have set a contribution rate for that also, since if they're, have retired from under the KPPA system and went back to work and they were 65, they weren't allowed by Medicare regulations to participate in Medicare. And the lawsuit found that we still owed their healthcare benefit. So as a result of that, we recommended that the, those that fall under the Medicare Secondary Payer Plan be recommended the same as the one above where we did the Living Well PPO contribution. So, and that would also be for the retiree as well as dependents and spouses.
Okay, if we could pause there, we'll do a motion for one through four. Can we go back to number?
Before we do that, I was going to, Ms. Pettyjohn, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure.
No, I think you covered it all, Mr. Powell.
Okay, thank you.
If we could go back up to number two in that middle bullet, does that mean we have a passive enrollment this year? So that if you, if you don't put in a, a health insurance app, you're already enrolled in the system right now, you don't put in an application during the mandatory open enrollment, you stay where you are for 2024, you have the same policy that you had in 2023. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That, that does allow them to roll over. It also allows a new retiree that comes on during 2024 that don't enroll in the plan to default as well into that plan, the Living Well Basic. So they'll have some coverage. They can get out of it or maybe follow, you know, exception to get into a different type of plan since they do have a benefit to change their enrollment the month after they retire. So they have a little bit of extra time. It's a confusing time for them when they retire. They think insurance will roll over and it doesn't. And so this is kind of a thing that keeps them from being without a plan.
Right.
And they can talk to us about it.
Any other questions about items one through four for the non-Medicare eligible retirees? I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendations outlined in one through four.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And Mr. Ferguson gave us a second on that. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, Mr. Powell, if you'll take us into the Medicare folks.
This, this one got a little interesting, I have to admit. That required us to even have the second meeting yesterday. On our original meeting, we recommended that the premium plan would be at the rate of $93.35, which is the Humana, I just had a brain bubble there. Humana Medicare Advantage Plan, not the essential, but the, help me out there, Connie.
The premium for the premium.
Thank you.
Keep saying, Jerry, you'll be right there.
Well, actually, I think what I'll do, I think this is a good place to stop and let Ms. Pettyjohn talk about why we had to have the second meeting and why we have come back and proposed a different rate for this.
Okay, if, if you look down into that last bullet, okay, it looks at, looks at the medical only premium. This is an unusual circumstance that you're going to have, that MA Plan premium at the $93.35. It's, and, and that it's higher than what this medical only premium. So the committee looked at making a change to the contribution rate and allowing, because what would happen is in this group of people in this fourth bullet, they would experience an increase in cost that really would not have happened other than the fact that, you know, we had such a rate with the Medicare Advantage Premium Plan. So they wanted to go back and look and see if they could do something that would look better and, and work better with all retirees enrolled in all of these plans. And so that's where the second meeting came into play and they looked at statistics, numbers, et cetera, numbers enrolled in these plans and came up with a recommended contribution rate of 188.73 as being the contribution, instead of it being set at the $93.35. So anyone enrolling in the Medicare Advantage Premium Plan would, would get the 90, would, you know, at 100%, would, we would pay the $93.35. Anyone enrolling into the essential plan, we're going to pay the $4.07, is that's the contribution for that. And then the medical only and, and then the rest of the components of the mirror plans would, would be at the 188.73 and then based on, you know, the 100% service credit. So that's the one change they made, I think, is just the contribution plan and the contribution premium up to the 188.73. So that should give most people, you know, there's going to be a premium reduction for spouses. For example, if you were paying for your spouse in the MA Premium Plan, it's not 252.51 as it was in 2023, it's going to be $93.35. So I think that's got it all. Is that right, Mr. Powell? Does that sound?
So if I can work it through from a little bit different perspective.
Yes, sir.
I, I get an allowance of $188.73. And if I want to buy the premium plan, then I'm only going to spend $93 of my allowance. Is that correct?
Yes, but you're only going to get $93 because that's what the plan costs. So the rest of the money is going to stay in the trust.
Okay.
Or not come out of your pocket.
The next question I have is, does that change our passive enrollment? Do I need to file an application this year because I want the premium plan, but the contribution plan is the medical only plan?
Well.
No, it's the contribution rate. It's not the plan.
Gotcha.
It's just the rate. Because what it was, the, the people in these Medicare, medical only and these others were having a rather substantial increase in what premiums they were paying the last years. And so this is just, this just, it's just setting the rate. The plans that you chose are still the same. We'll get into the default plans and all that. And it, and back to your original question, it's still the passive for your Medicare elders, still passive enrollment on that also.
It will, but if they decide to change to a different type of plan because of this cost change, which they might for their spouse, for example, then we would take an, an application and we can do that for them. So as we go out, we're going out again, this year, we're going out a little bit more across the state in both groups, non-Medicare and Medicare. And so we'll be getting the word out a little bit. Of course, we're still doing webinars because we find both ways work. And I think, you know, and of course in the books, the materials will have this information as well. And of course on the website.
Could you explain the difference between the regular premium plan and the medical only plan? How that would come into play? I think that may help people understand it too.
Yeah, the Medicare, the Medicare Advantage Premium Plan has medical benefit and prescription drug benefit. The medical only plan is a supplement that we are the self-insured plan sponsor for. By we, I mean the Trust, KPPA and the Board. We are in charge of that plan and we've hired Humana to do the ASO or the, you know, the, the administration of the contract. So it does not have a drug benefit. The reason the Board continued to provide this plan for retirees is because you have a little over 3,000 people in these medical only plans. It's less than it was in 2012, but still provides a benefit for retirees who have VA, for example, for their drug benefit or a spouse's, you know, drug plan. Or some people have such low drug costs, they may not want to get into the Medicare Advantage Premium Plan because, you know, it was a 252 rate. Well, this would allow them to get maybe something on the open market in their local area that might satisfy their needs better. And then remember, the medical only group is the very people that can go out and do reimbursement. So they can go purchase their own plan. So, you know, as of this January, and then we would reimburse up to what their allowable amount or this, this 188.73 for next year. And that's, that's what with their contribution, we would be able to reimburse back. So that's, that's some of the reasons why, you know, I think that that was beneficial and, and did help the retirees with.
Madam Chair. Just back to your original question, I just wanted to make it clear that for anyone on the Medicare eligible plans, it is a passive enrollment. So whatever they are on this year, if they don't complete an application, they will go into the same plan next year. If they want to change, if they're on a medical only plan and they want to go to the MA Premium Plan, because it's a cheaper rate now, they can fill out a new application and be enrolled for 2024 on the MA Premium Plan. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Powell. Anything else on this number one? Okay, Jerry, take away on two, two and three then.
Yeah. Ms. Pettyjohn, I want you to go ahead with the next section.
Okay, and, and this is just the recommendation to continue to providing the mirror plans, which we have around 95 people in those plans. They, they are in there for the most part because they have no Part B and they have failed to sign up when they turn Medicare eligible for some reason or another. And this allows them time, this, it allows them coverage and while they're waiting to get that Part B established through social security. And it does cost a little bit extra because this plan has a prescription drug benefit, but it also has that medical only premium of what we've mentioned above. So as you can see between that and the drug benefit, then it's going to be a little bit higher cost. I believe the cost we updated on the second memo, that is pretty close, but I think it's two. Well, no, we didn't, actually, we just put the two, so I'm sorry it wasn't there. But it's a little bit less than that and we didn't change the memos after the meeting yesterday. So I believe it's, and, and I'm sorry, I'm struggling with that cost.
What cost are you looking for?
The Medicare Advantage Premium Mirror Plan.
That is 328.11.
Yeah, okay, so it's, it's a little bit, it is, it's going to be a, yeah, the admin fee though is going to be $139.38 because of the change that was made in the second memo. So that 234.76 is, is too high. So that's what would have, that was one of the things that would have happened if we'd have kept it at the $93. So just that correction and we need to make that update. Oh, and it's one other reason you would be in this. You have a transplant, you just had a transplant, you're at a transplant facility that's not in Humana's network. Then a mirror plan would be what we would use because the facility would take original Medicare and then, you know, our plan would pay secondary. And then there's a drug benefit they could use as an outpatient that's a Humana drug plan that marries this up together. And they don't have to pay that extra amount because the network is not there to support them. We've used this plan to do that. And it is, it does cost a little more because it's a supplement to original Medicare.
Which is a good point that you made on that statement to, that's going to come and play on another one of these bullet points we're going to talk about in a minute.
So it's surgery, transplant in the middle of a transition of care. Or if you have a provider that's taking care of someone with a complicated disease and they just absolutely refuse to even bill Medicare and/or take, you know, Humana or do, you know, they will, they may take. So actually, we have one other, we've had a total of three people since 2012 that use this type of benefit. Mostly it's for the no Part B, the people who have trouble getting into the Medicare enrollment for that piece, which is critical for outpatient physicians and hospital coverage for outpatient, et cetera. So Part B is, is very important. And we transition them off, we get a monthly file and then we do a couple of ad hoc reports to kind of help them get, when they become Part B, then we can transition them into the Medicare Advantage, which will cost them less and, you know, provide them the complete benefit A, B and C together. I mean, A, B and D together for Medicare Part C. So that's all on number two, isn't it, Mr. Powell?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it sure is. And just want to kind of remind everybody, even though we set the contribution rates at a higher than what the Humana benefit, or rate is, plan rate per person, per member, we don't pay what our rate is, we pay what they, our billing is for per member. So. So even though we were setting their rate at 188.73, the, when it comes to the Medicare Advantage, we'll only pay Humana the 93.35. Anything as a result of the 188 will still stay in the coffers of the insurance plans.
For the self-insure, yeah.
Yes. So it's not going to really cost anymore, it's just it's saving our members, saving them some money. Any questions on our Medicare?
This might be a good point to emphasize that the committee was trying to get the actual rate that members are paying for that contribution plan to the premium amount for the plan. What we have done past.
The majority of the members.
Yeah, we had a higher premium than what was actually charged to us by Humana. So this levels the cost to exactly what that policy cost us at Humana, which should prove to be simpler in future years. I think you got one more.
We don't believe, yeah, we don't believe this will happen again. It is an aberration, I've not seen that.
Yeah. Everybody's quite shocked about it. And the only time it will come into play on these rates is if somebody is not getting a 100% contribution rate paid for, or they have other dependents on their health insurance plan.
Correct.
That's an on time will come into play.
Okay. Number three.
Oh, yeah, we set the default for the medical eligible retirees being the KPPA medical only plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just one where we have to set, you know, if somebody doesn't do anything in turning in their paperwork, we still have to put them in some plan. And so it goes into the medical only plan as a default. Of course, they can always come back later and plead their case, try to do it if they, and usually they're pretty good about it, they got a window.
Yeah, they do have that extra, because a new retiree who mainly falls in this situation and they have the month they're retired to actually make a change to a health insurance plan to a different venue. Because we all know, and I think the board recognized early years ago, that you don't really know these Medicare plans maybe until you're experiencing them a little bit and you may have made a mistake. So I feel like that's a very good policy to continue following and it gives them coverage when they would have had nothing. So they can call and say, hey, I need some help here, we need to work on this. And we work on those exceptions as such. I think that's it.
Any questions from all of us, for any of us?
For the Medicare side. I think we're ready for a moment.
All right. I'll make a recommendation that the board ratifies decision made by the Retiree Health Plan Committee for the Medicare eligible retirees as presented.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hackbart. Any additional questions, discussion? All those in favor of accepting the recommendations from the committee for the Medicare eligible plans, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, I think that is, that motion has passed. Okay, that brings us back.
Now, for what everybody's really interested in, they want to know about the insurers, but now they want to know about the, how are things going between Humana and Bluegrass Health Medical Group? And Ms. Garrison, I know you're on here somewhere.
Hi, I'm here. I think Larry's going to address the question about Baptist Health and the contracts.
Yes. I've actually gotten questions about if Humana and Baptist Health can't come to an agreement, do the CERS retirees still have Humana insurance? So if you could give us a status report on Baptist Health negotiations, I've assured that we've done this before with Vandy and got to a positive conclusion, but if you could bring us up to speed on where we are with Baptist Health and also explain the differences between in-network and out-of-network. So.
Sure, yep. Thank you.
And also how it would affect their, I'm still stuck on contribution, their out-of-pockets.
Right.
Yes.
I'd be happy to cover all that. So, yeah, as you all know, we've been in negotiations with Baptists, you know, since earlier this year. We do not yet have a new agreement with Baptist, so this is the medical group, not the hospital. So as of today, that contract is still set to expire on September the 22nd. So at that point, assuming no contract is reached, we're optimistic and remain in negotiations with them that we will reach a new agreement prior to September 22nd. But if we get to that point and we're unable to reach a new agreement, then they would be out of network and their materials on their website, you know, refer to the fact that they, members with non-par benefits, so you all have a PPO plan, which allows you to, your members to see doctors and providers who are not contracted with us. So in that case, they would be able to see these Baptist providers using their non-par benefits. In this case, for our group Medicare clients like KPPA, those benefits are identical in-network or out-of-network. So your retirees, if it gets to a non-par status after September 22nd, they would be able to continue seeing Baptist providers with the exact same cost shares they have today. So in effect, they would, there would be no impact on your retirees. Now, certainly, we want the provider to be in our network, they will show in our directories if they are in the network. It's better all the way around if they are a contracted provider with us and we're working toward that end. That's our goal is to keep them in the network. But that is not yet done. And so until it's done, we're planning for sort of all eventualities. We are required per CMS to notify these members who are Baptist patients that they are set to terminate as of September 22nd. So those letters are going out this week. Unfortunately, that may stir up some questions and concerns from your, from your membership. But I can assure you, this is at the highest levels of Humana. We want and need them in our network and we are doing everything to keep them a contracted provider after September the 22nd.
When we went through this process with Vandy, we had a couple of extensions. We got to the date and then there was an extension for negotiations that left everything the same while the two parties kept talking. Do you anticipate that we might have an extension or two or three?
I haven't heard that, Ms. Pendegras. I'm not sure if that is a possibility. I guess it certainly could be if, you know, if that was valuable or necessary as a part of the discussions, but I haven't heard that. So we'll know more in the next couple of days whether something like that might need to occur.
Aye.
I think that would make some of our membership feel more comfortable. You know, I understand that there's, to our members, there's really no difference in the in-network and out-of-network because it's going to cost them the same regardless. But I think just for the well-being, mental well-being, if there could be a extension just so that our members could feel better about it. I know it's not practical, it's not practical where it's, because it's the same, but it's just, I think that would alleviate some of their concerns.
Yeah, we'll share that feedback with our contracting team if it comes to that, you know, that may occur.
Thank you, sir.
Help to include an emphasis in that letter about the, there's no difference between in-network and out-of-network. Is there a difference in deductibles and maximum amount of pocket between in-network and out? So those costs are the same. So no change in cost to members?
Not for group Medicare members like KPPA. We use what's called a passive PPO. And so that is where the benefit is identical in or out of network. That's not the case on the individual market. If your neighbor just buys a Humana policy just one by one, they don't have a benefit that looks like that. Admittedly, the letters that are going out are not going to be very clear about that. These are CMS boilerplate letters that are not going to explicitly say that your benefits are the same out-of-network as they are in-network. Our call center is prepared to answer those questions should the members call, but the letter itself unfortunately is just not going to be able to call it out in the way that we would prefer.
Mr. Eager, if you could get our KPPA communications team maybe to work with Mr. Lowe and Mr. Garrison about maybe if we could fill in some of those gaps that they cannot include in the letter, we can make it specific to our membership and maybe that would...
Be happy to help.
Help with that.
Yeah. A supplemental press release.
How many letters are going to go out, Larry? Do we know?
I'm sorry?
How many letters are going to go out?
I believe it's nearly 13,000 affected KPPA members.
Do we not have the ability to email out to our members that information?
Some of them, we don't have all 13,000 emails, but we do have some of them.
That and posting it on our website would be a really good start.
And we do have stuff that posted on the homepage of our website right now about it, but we can look at updates that are needed there.
Yeah.
And posted again to Facebook.
I was in a meeting on Monday and the confusion about cost is very real. And so if we can emphasize that in-network and out-of-network are the exact same cost to our members, then I think Jerry is right, it will reduce the stress a lot, but we'll have much fewer heart attacks.
We will work on that.
I'm sure our communications team will have some great ideas.
Yep, we appreciate your patience. It's not, it's not where we want to be. We, we're a Kentucky company negotiating with a Kentucky company. We want to, we want this to be behind us. So we're hopeful that in the next few days that will be done. So more to come.
I'm looking at the success with Vandy and knowing that you guys can do it again. No doubt. The other question that I've had from members is about the notion of whether or not Humana is going to continue with group insurance plans. And that was the notion on the business plan item on the agenda. Could you speak to that just a little bit and let us know about, as much as you can anyway, about whether Humana will be continuing to offer plans like our members currently have?
Yes, excellent question. It's, as you know, earlier this year, we announced that we were exiting from the commercial group medical business. So that, that is plans just like the medical only and MIR plan that we administer for KPPA, those are, those are commercial plans. We are getting out of that business as a corporation. That, I understand the confusion there because this is a group plan also, but this is a Medicare Advantage plan that the Essential and Premium Plans are that we administer for you all. But the commercial plans that we administer for you, those will continue through 2024. And then 1-1-2025, we will, we are working with KPPA staff to implement a new solution there that we're still finalizing. But the short answer to the question about this plan, the Medicare Advantage plans are completely unaffected by the, our exit from the commercial group medical space. They're, they're, that's not part of what we're talking about. So these plans are going to continue, the Medicare Advantage programs are more than half of, all Medicare eligibles are in a Medicare Advantage plan like these. And so we have no intention of exiting that marketplace.
Thank you very much, that helps to clarify that issue. Hope that helps for our members too. Thank you very much. Any other questions related to healthcare insurance?
I was going to say that completes our agenda items unless somebody has something else.
You've had a busy time.
It's that time of year.
All right. Dr. Hackbart, it's your turn with the mic to talk to us about investments.
I'm muted, you're muted, Dr. Hackbart.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Investment Committee met on August 30th and the meeting was principally focused on information distribution. And there were no items that were considered or voted upon that would require ratification by the CERS Board of Trustees this afternoon. The second item on the report, there is a misprint or a goof, either one would apply during the same regular meeting that should be, should state August 30th rather than February 22nd. I think that's just the result of working off a previous format for which we, and I apologize. Anyway, also in addition to the information distribution part of the program, Welsher, which is our investment consultant, provided an overview of the capital market assumptions. Welsher indicated that the broader market has priced in a possible economic downturn or slowdown and we're still probably maybe beginning to experience that. And I think the probability of a soft landing is becoming more prominent as we move forward, principally as a result, of course, of Fed action. And the Federal Reserve's policy group seems to be considering another possible increase in rates, but that may be left until November. So we're keeping a close eye on that also with the information that Welsher is providing with us. In addition to those comments from Welsher, they also indicated that the equity market, as we probably all know, continues to be strong, but there is some concern that maybe the enhancement in the equity market is due to a small number of mega capital technical firms, tech firms, and that may be distorting the overall movement in the equity market. Welsher also reported on the inverted yield curve continues to, continues, and that's been making the fixed asset market very attractive for general investors. The KPP Investment Office also presented an update on the fiscal year as well as the last quarter or the preceding quarter. And the CERS plans, CERS plans had a very positive return this past year. The CERS Pension Fund of hazardous, non-hazardous had an average return of 10.2%. And that's certainly very encouraging compared to last year and we're very hopeful that moving forward, that that trend and that performance can continue. The Investment Office also reported on the study that's underway in terms of the overall asset liability study. And I think that's going to be a subject of a very, of a special meeting that we will hold probably in the next month or so because there's some very important considerations that go into that study and also some of the implications that we need to consider. And so we're going to probably have a special meeting to look at that study, consider the, what's being suggested and the implications for us as we move forward. And that's going to be a very important meeting for us. Those are basically the key points of our August 30th meeting. And I would now like to turn it over to Steve Weiler of the KPP Investment Office. And Steve, if you could give us a summary of the quarterly report as well as the fiscal year report, which you presented to the Investment Committee, that would be really good. So Steve, floor is yours.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Hackbart. Good afternoon, everyone. First, I'd like to say I'm glad investments is less complicated than healthcare. I think we can do this pretty briefly. As Dr. Hackbart mentioned, you know, fiscal... As Dr. Hackbart mentioned, you know, fiscal 2023 was a, presented a very challenging investment landscape with significant dispersion across major asset classes as markets struggled with the headwinds, uncertainty, rapidly rising rates, slowing economic growth, and geopolitical tensions. And as you mentioned, our, our performance for the fiscal year was strong on an absolute and relative basis. For the last quarter of the fiscal year, the CERS and CERS hazardous pension portfolios returned 3.30% and 3.31% respectively, while the CERS and CERS hazardous insurance portfolios returned 3.24% and 3.25% versus the benchmark of 4.06% for the quarter. So we trailed the benchmark during the quarter as markets rose rapidly, which is to be expected kind of given our more defensive position. For the fiscal year, as Dr. Hackbart mentioned, we performed, all of the portfolios exceeded their assumed rates of return and significantly outperformed the benchmark. The benchmark returned 9.54% for the fiscal year. Putting that in dollar terms, the outperformance relative to the benchmark for the fiscal year equates to approximately $87 million at the pension composite level and $36 million at the insurance composite level. So very strong relative performance. Manager outperformance and staff's positioning within asset allocations, primarily in public equities and fixed income, were the most significant drivers of outperformance for the fiscal year. As I mentioned, public equities and core fixed income portfolios combined to produce between 75 and 85 basis points of outperformance for the year. So very strong performance in those two asset classes were the primary driver relative to the benchmark. When we look at, depending on the, the data sets, Welsher has a data set of peers. We look at some other peer universes as well. For the 12-month period ending June 30th, it looks like the, the average returns for those peer universes were going to range anywhere from 6.5% to 8%. Much like, you know, we talk about the, the public markets, the investment markets and the dispersion that we saw, where we saw very strong performance, especially in large-cap growth stocks. We also had a number of asset classes that had negative performance for the fiscal year, including fixed income, real estate, private equity, and commodities. Very similar, that played out in, in our peer universe as well. We saw that smaller plans that tended to have larger allocations to public markets, public equity, and public fixed income outperformed the, the larger plans that tended to have higher allocations to alternative asset classes. And the dispersion, while we, we look at kind of where the median was, so that's 6.5% to 8, 8.5% for the median plans, the dispersions was extremely high in the peer universe as well. I mean, I think we've seen one of our neighbors printed a 2% for the fiscal year, and we've seen it returns as high as 15% for the fiscal year. So very broad range across plans. And those were primarily driven by asset allocations and how much those plans had allocated, especially to the alternative asset classes. Investment staff was very encouraged by what we perceived as our durability of the plans and the portfolios to produce very strong risk-adjusted performance during the year. When we saw markets, you know, it was very bifurcated market. We saw periods of very negative performance and periods of very strong performance. So we're very satisfied with the performance of the portfolios and able to produce both absolute strong performance and relative performance, you know, in markets that performed both up and down for the year. Updating, final performance for July was recently released. We had a strong start to the new fiscal year with all of the portfolios up around 2%. While August performance is still preliminary, the portfolios did give back some of that July outperformance. We expect performance to come in around down 1.5% for the month of August. Markets have continued to trade sideways here to start September. As Dr. Hackbart mentioned, we're grappling with, you know, primarily the impact of, of rates, the higher rates that we've seen, whether or not, you know, global central banks continue to raise rates, whether the Fed, the pause at the next meeting and, but, you know, there's potentially, we've had a relatively hot inflation print today, whether that means there's another quarter basis point rise in, in November. I don't think that's necessarily material. I think what, what we're looking at is we're probably near peak rates, but the argument is really going to shift to when, when does the Fed pivot? When do central banks pivot to, to cutting rates? And our view as staff, and I think this aligns with Welsher, our consultant, is we're going to be at elevated rates for an extended period of time, much longer than was initially priced by markets. I mean, if we, if we think about it, markets at, at one point were pricing cuts in 2023. They pushed that out to early '24. If we look where markets are pricing now, it's, it's more towards the end of 2024 before we start to see rates coming down and the Fed cutting rates. And that primarily has to do with the sticky components of inflation. While inflation has come down considerably from the highs, it remains elevated and elevated in a number of key areas. And those, that elevated inflation readings are, are going to take some time to come down. The, the knock-on effect of that is what's going to, what that means for economic growth and the prospects for economic growth. We've heard a lot of different terms bantered around from soft landing, no landing, hard landing. You know, our expectation is it's, it's going to be moderate. We anticipate a slowdown, further slowdown in economic growth, but we don't anticipate it that it will be prolonged. So what that means for our investment portfolios is that's going to create some opportunities. And that's one of the reasons, as Dr. Hackbart mentioned, that we're looking at updating our asset allocations. If we remember the last time we did this, you know, capital market assumptions were very different than they are now, especially on the rates front. You know, we were looking at a zerp world, zero rates, not getting much out of fixed income, especially that was acting, you know, traditionally as a, as a ballast to the riskier parts of our portfolio. It wasn't performing that. We look where rates are now and where we anticipate rates being maintained for an extended period of time. You know, that yield is relatively attractive. And so I think the change we'll see in our asset allocation relative to the current allocation, we're managing that. We don't want to materially alter it year to year. You know, these are long-term asset allocations. We should react to changes in the capital market assumptions, especially when they're as significant as they have been over the last 24 months. But we don't really want to, especially when we're, when we're looking at private asset classes making dramatic shifts. So I would anticipate some changes to the asset allocation that will get recommended to the Investment Committee, but it's not going to be very drastic. But I do think we, we have room to improve the efficiency of the portfolio, to increase the probability of achieving that assumed rate of return and to lower, lowering the overall risk profile while maintaining the liquidity that we've embedded in the portfolio. So we're excited by that opportunity. We're working with Welsher, and we hope to bring that before, especially called Investment Committee in the next, in the following several weeks. One of the things I really wanted to update was on page 78. I know this is a, a topic that we talk about a lot on our asset allocation. You know, we've been out of, out of compliance on that real return and whether the real asset class, the real return asset class since the, the change was made in the most recent IPS allocation targets and ranges. We've had a commensurate overweight in the specialty credit, both because we find that a very attractive asset class at the moment. But it also, you know, we're, we're allowed to invest in proxy asset classes per the IPS. And our view as staff is that the specialty credit currently provides the best asset class to serve as a proxy, meaning it has a very similar risk-return profile. So we, we, I did want to update on, we've made a lot of progress over the past fiscal years, so over the, over really the past 14 months in moving towards those targets. The, I also want to say that specifically for the asset allocations that were outside of the IPS ranges, a big question we get asked is what was the impact on performance? So if we look at the performance impact over the last fiscal year, specifically for the asset classes that were outside of the range, they actually had a modestly positive contribution to, to performance relative to the benchmark, contributing between 20 and 22 basis points of, of outperformance relative to the benchmark. So it wasn't detrimental to performance. In fact, it had a little bit of an increase. That's not something we're going to, you know, we want to maintain. We want to be within, inside the ranges and closer towards the targets. Since July 30th, we've had multiple capital calls from the real return mandates that were approved earlier this year. And while we still have work to do regarding that allocation and we're moving towards the target, if I look at the end of August asset allocations on a pro forma basis, so considering the capital that we have committed across mandates, that we believe there's going to be a high probability of getting called, it would move that real return allocation across portfolios to anywhere between six and, six and three quarters to seven and a half percent. So if all that capital was called immediately right now, it would move those, those allocations much closer to the target, much closer to the range. And we anticipate a significant portion of that capital. We have a couple of managers that are probably going to call a large portion of the capital that's been committed, you know, probably over the next four, six, eight weeks. So we'll be moving very quickly closer to the range and closer to the target. We're also in the final stages of evaluating some additional potential real asset opportunities that we hope to recommend in the next quarter. And we have capital that we expect to be called in real estate. If you notice, the real estate, while it's inside the range, most of the portfolios are below their targets. We have capital that we have committed, that we, you know, we're in the queue, and we expect those to be, that, some of that capital to be called over the, you know, the, the next two quarters, which would move us closer towards the target. So that's all I really had prepared. I did, the, the other thing I wanted to talk on that we talked about in the Investment Committee meeting was, you know, we, as of 6:30, so as of the end of the fiscal year, all of the proxies that we are eligible to vote are being voted in accordance with the CERS proxy policy. So we've met the, the statutory requirements. We also will be meeting the statutory requirement as far as reporting. So a, a full list of all of the proxies voted on behalf of the systems will be posted to the website, and we anticipate that as of 9:30. So we're happy that took a lot of work, took a lot of, Joe Gilbert did a great job in amending all of our contracts and negotiating with ISS, who is our proxy service provider. And so I'm happy to report that as of the beginning of the fiscal year, all of our proxies are being, where we're eligible are being voted in accordance with the proxy policy. I'll stop. I know Welsher's on and can answer questions as well if there's any specific questions to, to any of the material.
Any questions? For our investment team? You have anything else to add, Dr. Hackford? You're on mute. I think he's shaking. He said, no, he doesn't have anything else to add. Those mute buttons are so hard to find.
I think he's good.
That sounds great. All right, thank you very much. A lot of work that we, we look forward to seeing the results of that asset liability study and, and moving forward from there.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we're in the administrative section, and I'm going to make a couple of changes there because we have a couple of issues that need our attention for closed session. So I don't want to drag on too long. The bylaw amendments. Sherry, if you could go to page 115 for me, please. The only changes that I have made, that I proposed in the bylaws since our last 115. Yeah, there we go. That's the one. The only changes I have made in the bylaw changes since our last discussion was on this calendar. And if you look on the right-hand column by committee, what I've tried to do is to put the committee meetings on the same day and week in, in given months. Actuarial doesn't meet as often, but they would meet the second Wednesday of February and April, and then in October, it would be the last Wednesday because that's as early as we can get the actuarial report for them to review before a board discussion. Finance would be on the third Monday, except in November, when it would be after Thanksgiving. I try to avoid meetings during the week of Thanksgiving. Investment is a little more consistent with always the fourth Wednesday, except in November, where we go to the fourth Tuesday. Legislative doesn't meet every quarter. Personnel doesn't meet every quarter. And I tried to get some consistency with joint retired healthcare, but since we have members from KRS and CERS on that one, I didn't really change the schedule from what we've done in the past. And then the Board of Trustees, I have put on the third Wednesday of those quarterly months, except in November, when we need to meet to review the actuarial report before it goes to PPOB and December, when we have some financial reporting deadlines early on. So does anyone have any questions with that particular style of calendar? This would eliminate the necessity for us to come back and adopt a calendar every single year. These can go into the bylaws and you can look at your committee schedule. And if you're planning a, a long-term vacation that takes a little bit of planning, you've already got the schedule set out for you for that time period. So do we have any questions about using this particular schedule?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I suggest a change to the September quarterly board meeting? It's set for the third Wednesday of September. As you all know, we start getting ready to move into open enrollment. Our non-Medicare open enrollment begins October 1st.
Right.
So if, we have to get the materials to the printer to get in the hands of our members. So if we could change that to the second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday, sure. That's easy.
Okay. That'd be great.
I need myself a note to do that. I, I forgot about our publication schedule. No problem. With that, I'll entertain a motion to give first reading to our bylaw changes. So I would need a motion to approve the bylaw changes as submitted with the exception of changing the Board of Trustees from the third Wednesday of September to the second Wednesday of September. Thank you very much, gentlemen. That was Mr. Foster and Mr. Falkerson. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll put that back on the agenda for our November the 8th meeting for a second reading to get the bylaw changes revised. The next item on the agenda is the strategic plan. I'd like to put that off until November so we can have a little bit more time for the closed session discussion. Ed, do you have anything in your CEO report that?
No, I, I actually made it fairly extensive so that we would be able to get through it quite quickly.
So if you have any questions on, on Ed's memo, you can certainly reach out to him for that information. David, can you be shorter than Mr. Owens?
I'll try. I would say the same thing. If you have questions, my memo's been in there. I wanted to make a couple of comments, though.
Sure, go right ahead.
We have our strategic plan in gear, and Provalent has made visits here. We're going to make some more visits. They're still in the research phase. But we've said, one of the things we want help with is getting more systematic in succession planning. And I just want to comment, if you look at, Sherry, can you page down there to? Keep going. I think it's in there. Conference attendance? Yeah, keep going. All right. I've had two very intentional, and we have had two very intentional issues. One is giving senior management here more exposure. Legislators, other state systems, executive branch offices and so forth. The, and the second is to have them become better versed in all the things that KPPA does. So we're not so siloed. And as a result, there you see a very intentional effort to get senior staff out, meeting other agencies, meeting other state agencies. And Rebecca went to British Columbia, of all places. It was tough duty, I know. For a CEM meeting, it came back. When they come back, they report about things they've learned and, and people they've met, and they continue to follow up. I could go all the way around the table here for it. The other thing I see is we have a bi-weekly HR meeting, and this morning we're talking. And Michael has ways in and has some really good things to offer. And so this idea that, that, again, we want two things. We want better exposure and connectivity with outsiders by the senior management. We want them to be better versed in all the things we do. Inspectuous up there is, is the absence is, gee, where's Dave Eager? On that list. Well, we have a limited budget, and I think that we've gotten to a point in the last year, or actually about 18 months. If we have funds to send two people at Nazar, I shouldn't be one. be one of them.
Okay.
It should be people who are going to be here after July 1 of 2024.
Well, and sometimes it helps to have the folks in the trenches have that knowledge.
Yeah. And I see it every day, how they are better versed in things we do and making good contributions. We do a lot, we call it group think, get together and talk out issues that may relate to benefit staffing, but other people are involved in it, and I think it's really very true. So I just want you to know that things are in good hands.
Great. Any, excuse me, any questions for Mr. Eager? With that, I will entertain a motion to go to closed session to discuss litigation.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Could I get a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Foster. Appreciate it. All those in favor of going into closed session for litigation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. A motion having been made in open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose, and such motion having carried by a majority vote in open, public session, the board shall now enter closed session to consider litigation pursuant to KRS 61.8101C because of the necessity of protecting the confidentiality of the system's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney-client privilege.